Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We'll start the city council meeting with our prayer and pledge led by Councilwoman Brendan Moore.
Father, we come to you today asking you to strengthen the city. Help us to make the right decisions, Father. Watch over our workers as they travel in the snow and bless the citizens of Saginaw. These things we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Madam Clerk?
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, in whose law we will govern. The Constitution of Justice.
Madam Clerk, quick roll call.
Councilmember Tibbs, Councilmember Bench, Mayor Protem Klop, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Balls, Councilmember Humphries, Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight members present and one absent. Would you like to read any procedures for tonight's meeting?
If I had them.
Under your gavel.
Oh, there he is. Thank you. Okay, audience, just remind the audience to remain quiet, refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, rude, or obnoxious behavior. This time, please get out your cellphones for me and make sure they are put on silent or turned off, councilmembers. I'd like to remind each and every one of us of that so it does not interrupt. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Announcements, I do have a couple. Tonight's agenda has been revised to include Consent Agenda Number Nine regarding the Delta College Purchase and Development Agreement. And City Hall will be closed Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th, for the Christmas holiday, and on Monday, January 2nd, 2017, for the New Year holiday. And tonight, we have a Community Tree Grant Award presentation from Consumers Power, Consumers Energy.
And I'd like to invite Kelly Petros of the Consumers Energy and Director of Public Service, Phil Karwatt, to the podium. And do you have anyone with you? Yes, you do.
I do. I'm Braden. I'm the Business Account Manager for the City of Saginaw, and I serve as the area manager for Saginaw County. Just to give you some history, in 2016, Consumers Energy offered $100,000 in grants to Michigan communities to plant trees as a part of the Community Tree Planting Program in an effort to encourage responsible tree planting and sustainable urban forests and communities across the state. Up to $2,500 in grant monies were available per community. The Michigan Forest and Park Association reviews the applications and then provides us with the grant recommendations. A tree planting project must meet criteria to avoid conflicts between trees and overhead lines to be eligible. We provide communities with a guide titled "Right Tree, Right Place," a concept developed by the National Arbor Day Foundation, which shows how to choose appropriate tree species and suitable sites and community locations near electric lines. This year again, the City of Saginaw was selected as an award recipient of the Community Tree Planting Program, and Consumers Energy is proud to present the City of Saginaw with a check in the amount of $2,500 for this year.
If I may, I'd just like to say thank you to the representatives from Consumers, not only for the grant but coming tonight and speaking. I believe this is the third year, third year running that we've received this from them, so appreciative also because the first year it was in the amount of $1,000, and then Consumers has since changed it to up to $2,500 for the last two years, so we're going to continue to apply. I think you all know the condition of our trees. We have over 60,000 trees in our right-of-way. Many of them are which are ash trees, which are dead and dying and need to be removed, so it's very valuable for the replacement, and this helps to go in that effort, so thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have public hearing.
Okay, and before we start our public hearing, I'd like to remind the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration at the time action may be taken. Public comments shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing, begin by stating your name. The applicant or main presenter will be allowed 15 minutes; other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions but shall not ask questions of specific council members. And tonight, our public hearing is on, let me find it here, right there, request from Hosbeck Pickle Company Incorporated to create an industrial development district at 312 Owen Street in the City of Saginaw. And Mr. Miller, I see you're ready to go with the presentation.
I'm ready, and I'll be brief. Good evening, Mayor Browning, Mayor Protem Klop, councilmembers, and Manager Morales. I'm Tom Miller. I'm the Vice President of Saginaw Future Economic Development Agency, and I'm here today to speak in support of Hosbeck Pickle's request for the establishment of an industrial development district. This is just the first step, so again, this is a two-part process. First, you establish the district, and then in the future, there would potentially be the actual application for an abatement. It's a proactive step that council can take, which is, helps the company from a timing perspective, because as we know, businesses try and plan things out, and as spring comes and folks start to plan construction projects, we can take care of this now proactively. Some time ago, the state eliminated, essentially eliminated, personal property tax. This is for real property, so it's kind of confusing, but the state still allows for a 50% abatement on real improvements to property, so that would be an addition or a new building. The approval of any incentive of this type is a benefit to the city in the fact that it goes on a separate tax roll, which removes it from the ad valorem rule and is not subject to the tax cap that we all know hampers the ability for the city to collect property taxes. Council had a number of questions which I thought were good, because this is a time to educate, I think, the citizens in general about these types of projects. Most of Hosbeck Pickle's property, you've been very gracious in your support of some of their projects in the past, this was one of their remaining parcels, sort of in a large chunk of real estate that they own, and this is one that we've been trying to help them acquire for a number of years, so this would essentially bring that property into a district just like the rest of their property is. This property was the former site of Lufkin Rule before my time, so it is zoned properly. As I said before, if you establish the district today, you have the ability in the future to grant them a personal property tax exemption. Hosbeck has some plans for this site, but I'll allow Joe Hosbeck of the company to speak after I'm done here in a second, so he can describe potential plans that they have. And then there are a number of different incentives that the city council can provide or enact to help a company expand. So there are OPRA's, but in this case, OPRA's are only for existing buildings, so that's why we wouldn't do an Oprah, because it has to be on an actual building that is dilapidated. We could potentially look at a brownfield plan on this site. Brownfield plans are an environmental law that allows companies to essentially write a brownfield plan and then use taxes captured over a number of years to help remediate environmental responses to a property. Some people ask, well, why would you, how do you choose between an Oprah or a brownfield or a tax abatement? Brownfields cost in the range of about, you know, $10,000 to $20,000 to write, and they have to go out and sample, take phase-two sampling of the sites where they're going to write this brownfield plan to help construct how they would remediate the site. So essentially, the benefit and the amount of activity that you would do to capture those taxes back has to outweigh the $20,000 that you would spend on writing the plan. So at the appropriate time, we would, we would look to, you know, when a company decides that they're going to start to do a project, we'd take a look at the environmental response to a site. Now, in this case, Lufkin Rule cleaned the site up, cleaned the entire site up, so we don't think that brownfield is going to be appropriate here, and that's why we would choose to do a property tax abatement. So now, I won't take any more time, but I'll bring Joe Hosbeck up here for the company who can talk specifically about the project.
Mayor Browning and councilmembers. I'd like to give you a little history on Hosbeck Pickle. Grandpa Charlie started Hosbeck Pickle in 1923, so we've been in business for 93 years. About two-thirds of our employees live in the city, so that's about 50 of our employees. We need this district created because we intend to construct a building for more manufacturing, maybe in the spring. Will we be back for an abatement when we get the construction costs more in line? Do you have any questions?
Appreciate the fact that you guys are standing here in the City of Saginaw, and we appreciate you hiring people who live in the City of Saginaw, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I want to thank you for all the support that you've given us in the past.
Hosbeck Pickle's been a supporter of the city for a long time, and this is nice to see further expansion of your company in our, in our city, so thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that in particular, I like the fact that you work with food products, and I think this is a natural strength for Saginaw and the area surrounding it. We grow it, we process it here, and then we sell it, not send it elsewhere.
Yeah, our biggest customers are Subway, who supply about half in North America, like the eastern half of Canada and U.S., and we have other customers nationwide, like Papa John's and Domino's, that we supply peppers to. We're struggling to compete with everybody else in the business. It's a very competitive business nationwide. There's some big guys out there, and we're still a family business.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, you guys.
You, too. Thank you.
Need to call for comments, two additional times.
Oh, I got two more times, yes. Any other one, anyone from the public that would like to comment? Anyone else that would like to comment on the industrial development district at 312 Owen Street? Being none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
From support.
They moved in support. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at personal appearances.
And for personal appearances, as we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and your input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit. We'll be timed by the clerk, so be sure that you cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching on SGTV, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Joy Wagner.
Good evening, City Council. You have some letters in front of you. On December 3rd, I received a letter about the occupancy rule that needs to be, I think, amended or changed, because my address is 5318 East 29th Street in All Gray, but it is also 121 South Mason, Saginaw, Michigan. I received a letter that you have in front of you on the 3rd. I'm a widow, senior citizen, living on a fixed income. I called the clerk and talked to Cheryl on December 5th at 1:00, and I was told I had fines of $300 for not paying the occupancy rule, which I knew nothing about. They said they had sent them out in 2014. If it had been sent out, you would have seen me here in 2014. On the 6th, I still had no contact. That Monday, I came to the last council meeting, talked with the city clerk. She said she would look into it. Tuesday went by. I came down Wednesday to sign in to talk to you, and her, one of her office members said, can you have a minute? I'll look at it. They looked at the law, went through it. City clerk, she said yes, that it should be changed or as a snowbird status, told me I did not need to worry about this anymore, about the problem, that I never, and I asked for something in writing to let me know that this problem, this situation, was taken care of, because again, I've been born in Saginaw. I've been here all my life. My house has been for 33 years. I take care of it, everything, and I understand where you're coming from to try to get people that are not, that are doing the rental in the area, because 80% of the houses in my area are rental homes, but I am not. I do have a daughter that has lived with me all my life. She still lives there. If I were to, I go back and forth to All Gray all the time. Again, I do not pay homestead tax here. I pay a higher tax for the City of Saginaw because I am not homesteaded. Then the next day, city clerk called me back, never came really quick. Came to 12:30 the next day. She said, nope, that I could not be a snowbird, and sad to say that my snowbird, I can only fly from All Gray to Saginaw, and they're not allowed, can't make it to the warmer areas, and that I would have to pay the fine, and I told them I would like to come and talk with you. I realize, again, that we need to look at changing that city ordinance so that it does not catch the 20% of us out of the 100% of people that you're looking for, for people that, again, I support the City of Saginaw same way Hosbeck Pickle does. I've lived here all my life. I shop here. My kids shop here. My grandkids are here. Just because I have a home in another area, I should not be penalized for things I didn't know about, and I shouldn't be have to pay to live in the City of Saginaw. I should be able to live in the City of Saginaw because I want to live in the City of Saginaw. Again, I realize the ordinance, it was written up in 2009. It needs to be amended, and I would like to talk with other people, the city's manager about it. Thank you.
Here we are now at remarks of council.
All right, remind councilmembers of the five-minute limit, and we begin with Councilmember Mr. John Humphries.
Considering it's cold outside, I'm going to pass, too.
Maybe I should pass. I just want to say, good evening. Welcome, everybody. Those who are in council chambers and brave the arctic temperatures to join us this evening, welcome. And those of you that are tuning in at home, I just want to say Merry Christmas. Have a great holiday season. 2016 was a good year for the City of Saginaw, and hopefully 2017 will start off equally as well, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thanks so much.
Good evening, citizens. He took my thunder. I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and Ms. Joyce, I'm sure that we're going to look into it, and I hope we get some resolution for you. And that is it.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I cannot be quite as brief, but thank you, everyone, on this nice brisk winter evening. It's good to see you all here. I do want to, first of all, mention that Saginaw, as of Saginaw County and the City of Saginaw, as of today, has a new certiorate court judge. Is our former city attorney, Andre Barella, was sworn in today at 5:30 this evening and has now been invested as the newest certiorate court judge to replace the retiring Frederick Borchardt, who will tell you he's not happy because he's being forced to retire because he's only aged 70, and he calls it a forced retirement. Nonetheless, it's good to announce Andre, many of us know him. He sat in the same seat as our current city attorney and performed very ably, and I'm sure he will do so as, as our newest judge. I do want to mention, we received an email about our police chief and some of the officials from the department having the opportunity to, in fact, not just opportunity, but they were invited to, by the United States Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, to a 21st Century Symposium on Violence Reduction Strategies. Our, our police chief and some of his officials attended. We were only one of 20 cities invited to attend that symposium, and it's in great part because of what the local police agencies have done to reduce crime in Saginaw by the amount of 60% in the last five years. To me, that's tremendous. Chief Bush, Chief Ruth, and those who have helped you, I really want to commend everything you've done, including the Sheriff's Department, the Prosecutor's Office, Michigan Department of Corrections, the Michigan State Police, Saginaw County Judges, and all of those who participated in this crime reduction. That is a huge confidence booster for those who live in our city, and it's something that we should be heralding every day. Next, I had a chance to attend a event, or I was invited to attend at Great Lakes Bay Health Centers, a meet and greet to learn more about their, the Great Lakes Bay Health Centers, a couple weeks ago, and they asked me to invite all the councilmembers. There's three more of these events coming up, Thursday, January 26th at 5:00 p.m., Thursday, February 23rd at 5:00, and Thursday, March 23rd. They would be very appreciative of any other city personnel or staff or councilmembers who would be willing to take a tour and learn more about this service, that is, helping the underserved medically in Saginaw. Next, I want to also invite councilmembers to attend an event that's being hosted by the Rotary Club of Saginaw, which, in the interest of full disclosure, I am not a Rotary member. In fact, I'm sort of a competing club member. I'm a Kauanian, but nonetheless, the Rotary Club of downtown Saginaw is inviting all the councilmembers to attend a luncheon presentation on January 4th at the Saginaw Club, where Rich Wells of the Dow Chemical Company will be the guest speaker. He is the VP of Operations of Canada and USA North, and will be speaking regarding the Dow Chemical mergers and their impact in the Great Lakes Bay area. Since that affects the City of Saginaw, I thought it'd be a very good topic for our councilmembers to be informed on, so I would like to pass these on to our councilmembers. And finally, that's all the announcements. I do want to say Merry Christmas to all our constituents. Keep warm this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank those who are here today. Mr. Hosbeck, thank you for your continued investment in the city. A great corporate citizen. We appreciate all you do for our city. Ms. Wagner, I think you're totally correct. We, you're just as important as our corporate citizens, and I'm sure the city has a pretty good track record of following up on complaints and concerns, and I'm sure you hear something from the city. Just two points I just wanted to make, Mayor, real briefly. Last week, or excuse me, last meeting, former Mayor Joyce Seals came and had made some statements in favor of the proposed alcohol density zoning ordinance, and she made reference to a survey, and I guess I just want to provide some more detail to that. In 2013, 2014, the Michigan Department of Education did an anonymous survey with 7th, 9th, and 11th grade students in Michigan, and the purpose of the survey was to get their feedback of their school and the area surrounding their schools, and I believe what Ms. Seals was saying was that 65% of the students had responded that they believed alcohol was easily accessible to them, and one of the suggestions that, that came out of this meeting that I attended, which was professionally monitored or facilitated, was that one of the things the city, city government could do in support would be to adopt an ordinance similar to the one that I'm proposing. I had this information in front of me, and if you want to see more details of the survey, I can get that to you. Just contact me. The second thing, Judge, Judge, Mayor, was that, was that there was an article in the Saginaw News about Flint, the city of Flint, they came up with a grocery plan. I know our residents had a concern about the, I guess, lack for a better phrase, a food desert, which we were described as by Saginaw Valley State University a couple years ago, and to sum it up, it's just a lack of access to fresh foods in our city. The residents of the, of Flint, they did a market analysis, which was funded by the state, as well as a market research firm based in Maryland, and to sum it up, this two analysis said that, at least in Flint, the area was not sustainable for a national chain, but it was sustainable for smaller stores. And so what a group of individuals did, they created a co-op, and with the assistance of the land bank, as well as churches and the local foundations, they're in the process of opening, or attempting to open, two grocery stores in a part of their city. Try not to make this a habit, but I thought it was a very interesting article, so I brought a few copies for my fellow, fellow city councilmembers. So I just thought something that maybe we can discuss at our strategic plan in the beginning of next year, or if our residents come to us about the lack of grocery stores in the area, this is something that we can use as an analogy or as an idea. So I thought it was very good, so I just thought I'll share that with my, my fellow councilmembers. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, let me apologize to the rest of the council and the audience for my tardiness. I, along with Floyd Klop, was at Judge Barella's investiture. I believe I just either hit the lights worse or left later. Part of my schedule the last week or so is, as the newest councilmember, getting to know some of the department heads and learning more about city operations in advance of our strategic planning meeting in January. I met this week with John Stempel from the Inspections Division, Paul Reinch at Water Treatment, and Police Chief Bob Ruth, and I want to thank all of them for very candid discussion. They gave me all the time I wanted, and we had very wide-ranging discussion of their departments and how they interact with other departments in the city. In particular, Chief Ruth and I spent quite a while together. He had just returned from the conference Councilman Klop mentioned in Phoenix, and I'm going to go a little farther. They were basically the rock stars of that conference with the reduction in the violent crime rate we had here in Saginaw. It's over 62% over the period being studied, and talking with Chief Ruth, one of the strongest reasons for that is the strong partnerships they have with other agencies and the rest of the criminal justice community here, in particular, the Sheriff's Department and using state police as partners, not, not just occasional visitors to our city. And the results are out there. One of the other things he imparted to me, and I know this from my earlier civilian life, is the neighborhood associations. They are an integral part of this reduction. They, they are partners with, with our police department and the attending of the citywides. They're, they're right on the front line of what's going on in their neighborhood and what can be done about it. One other thing from my meeting with the police chief, I didn't bring enough copies for everyone, but when someone is a victim of a crime, they often don't know all the
for everyone, but when someone is a victim of a crime, they often don't know all the agencies or, or people to contact for victim's support. The police department has just completed and just started distributing a new brochure that expands on what used to be about a business card size contact to something with multiple local agencies. The state has a crime victim service, and this is given to everyone when they, police officer interacts with them on a complaint. So, this is a very comprehensive brochure, and I look forward to that getting out in the community more. On the personal appearance from Ms. Wachner, I am familiar with the ordinance you're referring to, and there do appear to be some problems with your particular type of situation, and whether it requires the ordinance to be changed or not, but certainly aspects of its enforcement can be looked at, I think. So, if that's something that is brought before us or the manager's seat comment, I'll be, certainly be happy to provide my input on that. Thank you for appearing before us with those comments. And to echo just about everyone else at this table, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. We will next be meeting in the new year.
Just about everything's been covered. So, Councilman Clock, I thank you for bringing up the issue of the open house that they had there at the, the health center over on Jane Street, and unable to make that one. But council members, if we can get it into our schedules, please get a chance to, to go through that. It's very, very, very beneficial. With that, I think everything else has been covered, so I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Years. Adam Clark.
Mayor, you are now at reports for manager.
Thank you. And first, I would like to thank Consumers Energy for, for the donation, for the tree grant award. And as Phil mentioned, we've been getting that for the past couple of years, and it does help out to replace some of those trees that have either died or had to be taken down for wires or some other purpose. So, we thank them for that continuing support. I will give you some background on the non-owner occupied letters that we did send out. So, Jeff Klopsick, the Information Systems Manager, came up with a report several years ago when he was the GIS Director. And it's a way to identify potential non-owner occupied residences in the city. At one time, I believe we had probably over 2,000 suspected non-owner occupied residences, commonly called rentals. Rental registration is what a lot of people call this. That is not what City Council passed originally. It's non-owner occupied, meaning the owner of the home does not reside there on a permanent basis, but someone else does. Subsequently, City Council did pass the vacant home, vacant property registration, which is another form for houses that are owned by someone who doesn't live there and is not occupied. So, there are two different forms here. So, I asked Jeff to run that report again. We had, periodically, we examine these things, and I suspect, suspected that the number may be going up of suspected non-owner occupies that were not registered, or did not have a registration. And in fact, at one point, I believe we had it down to about 300 or 400, and it had gone back up several hundred. So, we started mailing those, I believe, in October, sometime in October, and giving the owners a letter saying, "We believe this is a non-owner occupied residence, and if it isn't, come in and show us that it isn't, and if it is, you've owed two years' registration and potentially could have enforcement if you don't register, or come in with an explanation." So, there are several criteria that go into that, and water bills not in the owner's name, and one of the other criteria is personal residence exemption, which is commonly known as homestead. So, this is one that, that comes into play in a lot of these, and if you own the home in Saginaw and you don't have the P R E, then you are telling the state of Michigan that you do not live there. In fact, the form says occupying means the principal residence, the place that you reside as in your permanent address, and is absent, if absent and intend to return. So, we look at if the owner has a P R E in another community, then obviously this, the home in Saginaw is not the principal residence. So, just wanted to, to note with council that that is, is what we do, and those are some of the criteria that we have. We do apply the ordinance as it's written, so if there are any changes, that would be up to council to change the ordinance. I suspect that, given the title of it, it wasn't intended to simply be a rental registration as the title of the ordinance is non-owner occupied. So, we can, if you want to review the ordinance, it's available on, on the city's website, or we can get you a copy of it, but that, that is what we have been doing for enforcement for that ordinance. So, and the second big item that we have tonight is the audit report. So, first, before Jamie from Yo and Yo comes up to do her presentation, first, I'd like to thank all the individuals who worked on the audit. The Office of Management and Budget, Yolanda Jones and her staff help out quite a bit on, on the audit. Entire Fiscal Services Department does a lot of work on it, and any of the other departments that we do request information for, appreciate the cooperation of everyone. So, with that, I'll ask Jamie to come up and present it. You should have bound copies at your place, and I did forward the PDF of the audit on Friday.
No problem.
So, if you're, where you, you are testing, if you file a P R E with this, with the local taxing entity, that you live in that location. So, that's where you, that's where you reside, that's where you vote, that's, you're required to have your driver's license at that address. And I can, I can provide a copy of the, the P R E form, which probably most of you have filed for your own homes at some point. But yeah, that's one of the items that we do look at. Councilman?
I guess I wouldn't expect anything tonight, but I wanted, is there any exceptions, like written into the ordinance?
No, I don't believe so. There are a lot of different things to look at, and there are, we give opportunities for, for people to come in and, and make those except, you know, bring those exceptions if it's on the market for sale, as the city attorney said. But given these items that we do look at, you, you can get a pretty good idea if that is someone's primary residence, and then who is living there for the most part.
Jamie?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the mayor and city council for the opportunity to present the audit results tonight. And just as a reminder, the audit is up through June 30th, 2016. So, we'll go ahead and get started and cover the highlights. So, just wanted to start off by saying really what an audit opinion is. An audit opinion can only be issued by a licensed CPA firm, and management really is the one that's responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then, as your auditor, my team and I come in, we audit the financial statements, and then we give an opinion on them. And the city was issued an unmodified opinion, which really is the highest level of assurance that you can get, and it means there's no material modifications that need to be made in the financial statements. And sometimes you hear it called also a clean opinion. And the city also received an award of financial reporting achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association for their June 30, 2015 financial statements that were submitted, and that's an award for excellent in financial reporting. Now, we have a pie chart here that's up on the screen of your general fund revenue, and a couple of things I'll just point out here. As you can see in the dark blue section, we have your income taxes, which make up the largest portion of your general fund revenue, which is 40%. With your intergovernmental revenue coming in at 25%, that's the majority of your state shared revenue is coded here, along with some state grants that you receive, followed by your grants and contributions coming in at about 12%, and then property taxes making up 11% of your general fund revenue. And at the end of your fiscal year, so at June 30th, 2016, your total general fund revenue was $31,388,000. The next slide is showing your general fund revenue and transfers, and we've been plotting them since 2010, just to kind of see where we're going. And you can see pretty much from 2014, 15, and 16 are pretty close. We did have a slight increase this year in your general fund revenue over last year of an increase of about $264,000. Now, same type of pie graph as the revenue, but now we're switching gears and looking at your general fund expenditures, which came in at $30,743,000, which, when looking at last year, it was almost exactly the same amount as last year, about $6,000 difference. And you can see the green section here, the largest portion of your general fund expenditures is going to public safety, which is 60%. So, if you think of it as 60 cents on every dollar that's going out is being put towards public safety. Fire makes up about $10 million of that, with police coming in at about 8.5 million of the total 18 million, 18.5 million for public safety. And then we have general services making up 10%. That's mainly your street lighting, your buildings and ground maintenance, cemetery operations, and public improvement, with general fund government making up 15%, which really is your city council, city manager. It's kind of a wide variety. The, the largest portion in that is the retiree health insurance and contributions, which is about $2.4 million. So, here we've been watching the general fund expenditures again from 2010, and as I pointed out earlier, 2015 to 2016 was almost exactly the same. You can see in the, the red bars there. So, this slide is showing everything that we've just talked about for your revenue and expenditures, but now we kind of combine them on one slide. So, you can see in 2011, 12, and 13, the red line was higher than the blue line, which meant the expenditures were greater than our revenue. So, we were eating up some of the fund balance that we had in 2011, 12, and 13. At the end of 13, the fund balance was down to about $269,000. Looking at, you can see the city is doing a really good job at aligning their expenditures with their revenue, because now if you're looking at 2014, 15, and 16, you can see that they're almost even. We're staying right along, we're following what we have coming in as revenue with the expenditures being just a little bit below those. So, at the end of the fiscal year, at June 30th, 2016, your fund balance, the unassigned portion, which means it's not money that's restricted for a specific purpose, is about $2,300,000. When we take that and look at your total expenditures, which, as we pointed out, was about $30,743,000, we kind of divide that out by 365 days in a year to see what's the city on average spending per day. That comes out to about $83,000 a day. So, if we're looking at the unassigned fund balance, which is about $2.3 million, that does seem like a large number, but when you think about 86, or $83,000 a day, really the city would be able to operate for 28 days or about a month on our unassigned fund balance without any additional revenue coming in. Any questions on that? Okay. All right. Now, we're switching gears and looking at the water funds, and plotting the revenue here from 2010. And if you recall, there were some water rate increases that went to, into effect on September of 2015. So, we did see an increase, you can see, from 15 to 16 in the water revenue. Now, here we're just looking at the water fund operating expenses, with contractual services making up the largest portion of the 35%. And then you can see a really large portion is depreciation, which is just the natural use of our capital assets. We're required to kind of record that depreciation over the estimated useful life of those assets, with salaries and benefits making up 20%. Now, same type of revenue graph for your sewer fund. This actually decreased just slightly. The rates were the same for sewer, and looking at the consumption, it was down just a little bit over last year, so we did see a slight decrease in the sewer fund revenue. And then we have the sewer fund operating expenses, and in this case, you can see depreciation makes up 40% of the total sewer fund operating expenses, with the contractual services coming in at 35% of the total. Now, in addition to, oh, sure. Yep. Sure.
And sewer fund operating expenses of $13 million.
Yep.
Obviously, the first question is what's, what, where's the discrepancy, what's it due to?
Sure. The difference really there is with the net pension liability. If you remember from last year, that was the new GASBIA government accounting standard that we had to implement. We're recording the estimated net pension liability. So, we booked that last year, and then this year, you have an actuary done on your net pension liability, and it's based on a lot of different assumptions. Those assumptions came in significantly different than last year, so the adjustment really is not, not cash or not money going out. It is related to what the estimated net pension liability is. So, we do adjust it through that, and the other side of the entry is actually to credit and expense, so it reduces an expense.
All right. And that, does that account for pretty much all the difference, or?
That was the majority of it. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman John though?
Yes, I also noticed on the pie chart, both in water and sewer, but sewer is larger, the depreciation expense, is that not necessarily a cash expense, but we may be increasing fund balance for a planned capital program to handle that repair or replacement of something?
Correct. Depreciation is all non-cash related, so we have the capital assets on the books, and let's say we purchase something and we estimate it's going to last over 10 years. So, we take one-tenth of that and expense it each year, because we are getting that use out of it for 10 years. So, that's what the depreciation is, expenses. It's truly is what you said, non-cash, not cash going out.
So, so this would show that our sewer fund has a large capital base, then, if this represents one year's worth of depreciation?
It would increase the net pension, but as you're, you're writing these off, that shows that these capital assets are coming to the end of their useful life. So, a good point that, that's one of my later slides in there of looking into some of the infrastructure and stuff that is older, that we don't have, you know, set aside funds to repair or upgrade those.
Thank you.
Yep. No problem. Any other questions before I move on?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So, and the internal controls, so in addition to doing a financial statement audit, as your auditors were also required to gain an understanding of your internal controls. So, in doing so, we walk through all of the key contraction cycles, go through those. We also do some management override tests, so we pick a few areas that we don't want the finance department to know that we're going to test them, and we rotate them around every year. So, we did four new tests this year. And then also, in doing our regular audit of the financial statements, we had two unique instances this year. One was moving the boat launch fund from a governmental fund to a proprietary fund, because really it's based on user charges. And in doing so, the, one of the entries to record that was missed, and we caught that during the audit, as well as a one-time state appropriation for some road and street money. So, you can see, we did have some audit, we had two audit adjustments that were a very unique situation in one time, that we had noted on here as some, because they were material, we called them a material weakness, and we did not know any significant deficiencies during the audit. And in addition to doing that, when we're walking through the internal controls, looking at the financial statements, we're always trying to find ways to help the city become more efficient and effective into what they're doing. So, we did have five items that we noted for management comments and recommendations, and you should all have. And if you wanted to just jot a note down, it's on page six, is where we kind of explain these five items that we feel were items that we should mention as management comments and recommendations. If that wasn't enough, you also have to have a single audit done, because the city receives and spends more than $750,000 in federal grants, and you actually had, the city had total federal expenditures of $3,773,000. And this year, we tested your community development block grant, or your CDBG, which covered about 49% of your total federal expenditures. And we're very happy to note that there were no findings or noncompliance items that we needed to note. We also followed up on a prior year item that was noted, and we noticed that that was resolved as well. And my last page that I have is just some future challenges and things to consider. You know, we talked about, mentioned earlier, personal property taxes, the fund balance, it is improving for general fund, but it's just always to make sure, you know, we talked about you have one month in your unassigned fund balance. We have escalating healthcare costs. There was about $13 million in claims paid for 2016 compared to last year of about 12.4 million. There's been increases in retirement costs. We know those are those legacy costs for your current and previous employees, and the actual contributions were over $21 million in the current year. We did have a slight decrease in our tax base this year for the property taxes that we calculate for the revenue. And then, as mentioned earlier, there's really no funding for the infrastructure and replacement of old buildings and equipment, and we know that those are, you know, every year, we're writing some of that off, and the systems and buildings, roads continue to age with no specific revenue stream coming in to help support the upgrades or replacement of those, as well as the two items at the bottom, the unfunded other post-employment benefit costs. We had actual contributions of about 10.5 million this year. And last year, GASBIA 68 required us to record the pension side, and in 2018, GASBIA is now going to require you to report the OPEB side. So we're going to have to also report that on the financial statements. And just to kind of throw out a figure, that's about $217 million right now. And again, it's every municipality, every school district too, is going to be required to show that. And mainly, it's on your government-wide statements. Some of it will be recorded in your water sewer fund as well. Any questions that I could answer for you?
Further questions? Jamie, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Morales and Mrs. Jones for all their help, as well as their staff. It was a pleasure working with them.
And Jamie's been working on the audit for, I think, every year since Yo and Yo's done it, so very good to work with as well. And just wanted to point out a few of the items that she did mention, but I would like to reiterate, the city did add $645,000 to the general fund fund balance. So we're up to 2.55, and then there's a few hundred thousand that is assigned. But as Jamie mentioned, and I have it just $1,000 higher, but we were in 2013 at $270,000. So that was one of our goals at our strategic planning session a couple of years ago, was to get that fund balance up to a more acceptable level. So ideally, we would like to have it at at least 10% of our general fund, so that would be 3.04 million. So I think we need to continue to manage this and try to add to that fund balance each year. But another point is, general fund revenues came in at over the original budget and just under the final budgeted amounts. So it was within $33,000 in the $30.9 million budget. That's pretty good. And the general fund expenditures were under both the original and the final budgeted amount, so that's also very good. So a great job by all of our departments and divisions. The most, almost all of the general fund departments and divisions were under budget, and you can take a look at that by area in the budget document that you have. It's in section 5.5, it says 5.5, and goes on from there. So good job by all the department heads and all of our division heads as well on managing that. And I would echo what Jamie said. We do have a few things that we've done recently. You received an email about the retiree healthcare deal that we'd been working on, we're looking to implement in the new year, and you know that we did make some changes in our pension funds as well. I think we need to look at that not as new money to fund new operational needs, but we need to address some of the issues that we haven't been addressing. And one is putting part of that money into an OPEB fund, so that in the future, you don't have that bill come due with no savings. So you can try to level that out. And one that Jamie did point out as well, we have no fund for building repair or replacement. So anytime anything happens on our buildings, we are scrambling to cut in some places to pay for that. So that's a situation where we wouldn't like to be there anymore. We'd like to have a capital improvement fund in the city where, as a management team, we can decide where those dollars can best be placed to maintain and to make these buildings better workspaces for employees. And in a lot of cases, it's not just making it a better workspace, it's making it a workspace that doesn't have a leaking roof, or leaking windows, or unusable steps, and et cetera. So I think that's something we have to look at as we become more stable. So again, thanks to everyone who helped out with the audit. And finally, you all should have seen that the Delta College Development Agreement is on the agenda for tonight. This is something that we want to get on tonight, because Delta College has a pretty quick turnaround time on their items that they need to do with the state of Michigan, something that we heard from them in discussions of this agreement. I believe they need to be working with the state and have something done with their plans by early spring. So that was the onus to get this done on this, get it on this meeting. I have to thank our attorney that took over working on the agreement was Bill Smith, and he was working on it, still finalizing everything this weekend. So basically, a lot of the items in the agreement are things that would typically go in the development agreements. It's the property that they presented when they came a few meetings ago, near the Behringer Building and the Commerce Center and the State Building. And then the ability to lease the parking lot that we don't use, because for one thing, we can't maintain it. It's, would be just east of First Merit Event Park. It's a pretty significant lot that is chained. If you ever see it not chained, that's not an authorized use of that parking lot, so if you see that, I'd suggest that you contact Mr. Stempel. But it involves that, to provide them some significant parking downtown. I think one thing that we're going to have to do, and hopefully talk to the county and some other local units about, is park, additional parking downtown with the possibility of working on that parking ramp that I think needs some improvements. And we have talked about that in the DDA, so I think that's something that we really need to talk to the county about. SAG-AFTRA is helping to set up a meeting with the county for that, and I think they're acceptable to looking at that, too. I think that'll be necessary for future development and even serving some of the current development that we've had downtown with the Bancroft and Eddy. So that'll be important as well. A number of the other items, very similar to what we have in the Shaheen condo development for, the city will attempt to find grant funds or funds to do street improvements, which we've already done a lot of downtown and other streetscapes. So very similar to what we typically have been putting in our development agreements. So with that, concludes the management update. If an individual owns that home, then they could apply for a community development block grant loan program or the grant program, but it's not something that we could contribute to as a project. But you know, if there are things, if that's a project that's being worked on and a family is placed in the home and they own it, then it's something that, you know, we could look at, and the block grant area would be the area that would be able to provide that kind of assistance. They, yes, they apply through the block grant program as one of the service providers. So I'm not sure if they received it in the last funding cycle. They did? Okay, so they currently are receiving federal dollars through the city's block grant program. We'd have to look that up, yeah. But we can get that back to you and always.
We are now at the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website, also on WSGD-TV Channel 191. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
It's been moved and supported.
Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Before we go to appointments, any council members have any reports from any of the boards or commissions you'd like to share at this time? Being none, madam clerk, we have appointments.
Would you like to ask for a motion, leaving room for exceptions?
I'd like to have a motion to accept the appointments, leaving room for exceptions. Been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item is resolutions. Our first one this evening is the resolution establishing an industrial development district at 3012 Owen Street.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our final resolution is to eliminate the deficit fund balance in the Anderson Enrichment Center Operations Fund.
Need a motion to adopt? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Mill?
Are we appropriating funds out of general fund to eliminate this deficit? I'm not familiar with this resolution.
Yolanda, do you want to explain that?
Seeing general fund fund balance money to eliminate the deficit, what we're doing is, when the deficit came to our attention, we evaluated the whole operation. Some of the expenditures that were in there, we were able to reduce. We also increased some of the revenues for like rentals and contribution to the fund from the enrichment commission. They're also evaluating their marketing strategy to see what kind of marketing we can do to bring in more business. So that's how it was taken care of.
Favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion's in miscellaneous business.
Council members, are any additional business to be come before the council? Councilman? Yes, council?
Now, we don't get us a news reporter again. That corner looks mighty empty over there.
Chief is filling in right now. He'll have it. Chief is filling in. And he's got a really good story. He'd like to keep putting out there, too. So, okay. Anything else? Need a, have motion? Report? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? We're adjourned.